I'd like to call a July 10, 2017 council meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Coin is on vacation tonight, so I will be filling as President Pro Tem. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Coin. Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented by our Clerk of Counsel.
Second.
Would the clerk please call the -- for the vote?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee will next meet after council break. I believe the first meeting is August 21st. August 28th will be the next Finance Committee meeting, and I'll do public property since I'm the Chair of that here. We have no report this evening and no meeting scheduled. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colasar.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem, President Pro Tem. I have a meeting scheduled on July 25th at 5:00 PM here at City Hall downstairs in a multipurpose room. We have a couple items on the agenda, but one item is we are going to talk about our recycling here in the community. So if you have passion one way or the other to see recycling or not see recycling in this community, come on out. Again, that is July 25th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colasar. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've held no meeting, but we will schedule a meeting sometime after we resume our time back in August.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have had no meeting thus far, but we are going to schedule one sometime during our break at the beginning of August. Hopefully, with the next first couple weeks of August, there's some items that we have to discuss, so we'll give you a date when we get it set up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Hilberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro Tem. Not used to saying that. Nobody scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. And finally, Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee, starting at 17-128 Fund Transfer for the Railroad Fund, 17-129 Budget Amendments, 17-130 Amend Ordinance 9917 Council Salaries, 17-131 Approved Three-Year Capital Improvement Plan for the MRCRC, 17-132 Amend Salary and Benefits Code for Various Sections, 17-134 Expenditure Over $15,000 United Survey for the Street Department, and for the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, 17-133 Grant Application with Ohio Public Works Commission for the South Broadway Street Project. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hanwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The band concerts will continue on Friday evenings in July. They're always at 8:30 PM. They got rained out this past Friday evening. They did have one on July 4th and rained out, I think, at least two, if not three, of the June concerts, so we're hoping July's more favorable weather-wise for them. The farmers markets are each Saturday morning from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and I wanted to provide an update to the council and to the community on the police chief selection process. Our police chief resigned effective June 21st. On July 5th, which was the next meeting of the civil service, they determined and voted to select the testing vendor of the Ohio Association of Chiefs of Police. It will be a two-part test with an assessment center weighted at 65% and a written test at 35%. And then the top three candidates, which this is an administrative decision versus civil service, will also undergo a psychological exam. No outside candidates will be invited due to the quality of pool of candidates that we have in our department eligible to test for this position. And then there are, because of council's break coming up, there are a number of square events coming up here, mostly in July, with the exception of one in August. So July 10th through 14th is Arts Week, and there's a variety of activities up on the square related to that. July 13th is Ladies Night Out from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM. July 16th, which is a Sunday, is Art in the Park, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. July 29th, Woodsey's Music Store is hosting a rock school from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM on the square. And July 29th, there's also a movie night that evening from 8:00 PM to 11:30 PM. And then the one in August is August 13th, more of a craft show called Affair on the Square, and it's from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM also. And I'd just like to wish council well on your summer break. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Director, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a slew of items on the agenda tonight that I'll be addressing when we get to them. Also, budget hearings. I know our president is always excited about those, but he's not here, so I'll share his excitement. We have budget hearings later this week and next week, and then we're working through the non-General Fund budgets, and then Department Heads will be working on the General Fund budget soon, and we'll be working on those in the coming months.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Acting Chief Lieutenant Burke Pickler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Economic Development Director Kimberly Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note for council and the public. Our next round of ribbon cuttings are scheduled for Friday, July 21st, and we do these in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Medina, and the County Economic Development Corporation. So our first one on the schedule is for Circles on the Square, a donut company. That'll be at 10:00 AM, and they'll be located at 28 Public Square. This is the former Jan Lee Vintage Shop. At 11 o'clock, we have Pepe Walnuts Sweet Boutique at 503 South Court Street. At 1 o'clock, we are actually going to have a groundbreaking ceremony for the Carlisle Brake and Friction Company at 920 Lake Road. That's to celebrate the 150,000-square-foot addition for that project. At 2 o'clock will be Manhattan Dames, which is located at 140 West Washington Street in the lower level of Miss Molly's. And then at 3 o'clock, the BPR Rico Expansion Project Celebration, which is located at 699 West Liberty Street. So if you recall, they acquired a building that was warehouse and turned it into office space. Additionally, myself and Brian Cooper met with the School Board this evening with regard to our CHIF financing project. They're extremely interested, and our next step will be to get a draft agreement in place. And obviously, we'll be bringing that back to council as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Community and -- our Planning and Community Development Director, Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Fire Chief, Chief Painter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Recreation Center Director, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple quick updates. The Medina Rec will have our annual maintenance shutdown starting July 24th through July 28th. During this year's shutdown, in addition to all the painting, deep cleaning, and repairs that will be accomplished, we'll also be reservicing the track and the aerobics room flooring along with sanding and painting the lockers and the family changing rooms and men's locker room. Please note, we will be doing the women's locker room 2018. The schools have also contracted to grind and pave lots G&amp;J in July or August, which is a greatly needed improvement. This may take more than five days, and we do not have an official start date for this yet, so please be patient with us through this process. And then lastly, the next Rec Advisory Committee meeting is Thursday, August 17th, as our July meeting is canceled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Worley.
Thank you. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Building Official, Mr. Gladys.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. City Engineer, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to advise about our West Smith project. We do anticipate opening West Smith to two-way traffic in our construction zone by the end of next week, July 21st. It is a bit weather-dependent. We will issue a notice, but at this point, it does look like we'll be able to open it up to two-way traffic by the end of next week, which would be July 21st. In addition, the US 42 Project, the North Court Street, work continues on the Reagan intersection. Currently, two of the three phases of the replacement of Reagan East and West have been completed. Work's going to begin on the third phase this week. We anticipate that'll be completed within two to three weeks. At that point, we will be able to reestablish left turns from Reagan onto Court Street. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Service Director, Mr. Picoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, our yard waste program is continuing. Crews are doing their best to pick up daily. Just a quick reminder that the pickup for yard waste is the same day as regular trash pickup, most of the time after the regular trash pickup route has been performed. So we request that the folks set out a separate container that's clearly identifiable and at least three feet away from your regular trash, and we will pick up branches, twigs, grass, shrubbery, and leaves. We do not pick up dirt, rocks, and absolutely no plastic bags, so thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Patience, there are none this evening. Unfinished business, we have none this evening. Introduction of Visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue of concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public, we afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody who would like to address council this evening? Okay. Introduction and Consideration of Ordinances and Resolutions. Ordinance 103-17, an ordinance amending ordinance number 9917 passed June 26, 2017, Relative Section 31.01 of the Salary and Benefits Code, the Schedule of Pay for the Position of Members of Council.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Mr. Durham, could you comment on this?
Yes, Mr. President. This ordinance is to clarify that the change in pay for council only applies after an election. And for people watching at home who don't understand that, council is not voting themselves a raise. The raise only takes effect for the positions after there's been an election, so whoever wins that election then gets the new pay.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
No.
Motion passes, five VAs, one name.
Ordinance 104-17, an ordinance amending Section 31.14A of the Salary and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to sick leave.
You got a vote on the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Sure. Lamb.
No.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Ordinance 103-17 passes, five VAs, one name.
Thank you. All right. Now ordinance 104-17, an ordinance amending Section 31.14A of the Salary and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to sick leave.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. So this language in our salary and benefit codes mirrors what we changed in our collective bargaining agreements, and that's that what employees are permitted to do who are non-union employees under the Salary and Benefits Code are, if they don't use sick time for a six-month period, they can convert two of those to what are termed stress or personal days, and for each six months that they don't use that, so that's a total of four for the year. And what this change does is say that they have to use them within the following six months, once they're earned, and that they cannot carry them forward. And again, that matches the contracts that we just passed.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 104-17?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 104-17 passes, six-zero.
Thank you. Ordinance dash, I'm sorry, ordinance 105-17, an ordinance amending ordinance number 4917 passed April 24, 2017, authorizing the increase of expenditures to GB Hawk Construction to $29,250 for the fiscal year '16 CHIP Grant Project at 409 East North Street.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is to increase a PO for a CHIP program project that we have at 409 East North Street here in the City of Medina. Needed to be, there were some change orders that needed to increase the amount by $1,250, $1,250. The original PO was for $28,000. This would be $29,250. The emergency clause is requested is we'd like to get this approval and be able to pay the contractor, JB, GB Hawk Construction Company, as soon as possible. They're one of the few companies that bid on the CHIP program, and we'd like them to be able to have their cash flow move faster because they have to front all the money for these projects as they go through, and then they get completely reimbursed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 105-17 passes, six-zero.
Ordinance 106-17, a resolution adopting the tax budget of the City of Medina, Ohio, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and submitting the same to the Medina County Auditor.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the state's budget laws, this is the first step of the budget process. Of course, we've already started on ours, but this is what we give them to work out our Certificate of Estimated Resources.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the resolution? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance? Discussion on both the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is another project as a private rehab under our current CHIP program at 540 Ridge Drive here in the City of Medina. $36,000 would, there's a significant number of improvements to this building, to this home, and to this specific part of our building stock here in the city. The emergency clause is requested, just as the last one. GB Hawk is one of the few contractors that apply, that bid on these projects. We'd like to expedite the payment to encourage them to continue participating in our CHIP program, which directly benefits our LMI residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on either the emergency clause or the ordinance? If not, would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance? Mr. Worley or Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance does increase the original dollar amount for the ordinance for the renovation of the Memorial Park Pool House by a little over $9,000. I would stress, though, that the actual pool budget itself was reduced by more than that amount due to some change orders deductions to Astro Pool for the pool itself, so it's not a net increase, but this does increase the contract for the JP Fittington, who did the pool house itself. We're asking for the emergency clause because this work has been completed, and we'd like to pay them as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any further discussion on the ordinance or the emergency clause?
If none, would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
And would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance? Nap. 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 Nap.[1317.13]
ODOT has awarded the city about $600,000 for the reconstruction of the Guilford Boulevard Bridge. This ordinance will allow the city to become the project managers. We will bid and inspect and manage the project throughout the entire process. We've done this before on several other projects, including West Smith, which is underway now. I would like to stress, I think there's been, this project will not be done until next summer. There was an idea that we'd get it done in 2017, but it appears now because of some of the regulations we have to meet, that we will not be able to start this project until the summer of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 109-17 passes, six zero.
Ordinance 110-17. An ordinance to amend the codified ordinance of the City of Medina, Ohio, Sections 1147.13, 1147.16, 1155.01, and 1135.13C of Part 11, the Planning and Zoning Code.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These last couple of sections are part of a larger package of text amendments proposed to the zoning code that went to the Planning Commission, initiated by staff. Went to the Planning Commission on February 9th of this year. They recommended approval of all the various pieces. February 17th of this year, they all went to the Finance Committee for review. The ones that are in this ordinance this evening were held back for further review by the Special Legislation Committee. Special Legislation Committee reviewed those on April 19th of this year and recommended these of the ones that were held back to go to City Council for the legislative process. There was a public hearing to review these on June 26th of this year, and tonight, we're here for the ordinance. In general, there's a couple, a couple of the sections are to, changes are to bring the code text in line with practice and intent of the 2014 larger comprehensive text amendment that we did to the zoning code. 1155.01, the various changes within that section is to provide a little flexibility for fencing, to build fencing in, on corner lots throughout the city, to provide a little more flexibility in usable, of contiguous usable space of a yard. And lastly, to make a little bit of additional flexibility to the material standards of the building development standards in Section 113513C, to provide a little flexibility in the type and amount of materials that can be used that are, were prohibited until this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendel, and thank you for your work on this. I know it's taken a while to get to this point, but we appreciate the time and effort. Any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colasar.
Due to what we have in front of us as combined items here, section, changes in Section 1155.01, fences, I don't completely agree with, so I will be voting no on that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Colasar?
No.
Lamb?
Did you say Lamb?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 110-17 passes, five VAs, one name.
Ordinance 111-17. An ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a transfer to the Railroad Fund. For those who don't know, the city owns a railroad. It's the north-south that spurs off near the main railroad at AI Route, near Route 18. We have two customers. We used to have three. We are hopeful that we will get a third customer again, and the main reason the city makes this expenditure is to provide this accessibility. The railroad is available to a number of industrial properties on Progress Drive and Lake Road.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? The clerk please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Ordinance 111-17 passes, six zero.
Ordinance 112-17. An ordinance amending ordinance number 167-16, passed December 12, 2016, amendments to the 2017 budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are all donations and/or sales of hats and coloring books that the Bicentennial Committee is conducting to pay for our bicentennial celebrations. Our city will be 200 years old next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colasar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 112-17 passes, six zero.
Before we get to council comments, I did want to add, I know the mayor wished us well on our recess here, our vacation for council. We will not have a second meeting in July or the first meeting in August, as council will be on a break, but we will still be here. Most importantly, as Mr. Durham mentioned, we have budget committee meetings, and our first one is this Wednesday at 5:30, which would be Wednesday, July 12th. And then the following week, we have another budget meeting on Tuesday, July 18th at 5:30, also downstairs in the multipurpose room. So, still plenty of opportunities to come to budget meetings, and council will not be on a true vacation, so.
A working vacation.
A working vacation. Any other council comments this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment, you know, as I have in the past. I know all of us on the dais here are always extremely proud of our mayor and our department heads, and each and every one of them go above and beyond their duties that's assigned to them, and they do it with passion and love for the city, and we all appreciate that. But as I mentioned in finance tonight, my wife and I were unfortunate enough to be caught in the heavy downpour that occurred this afternoon and lasted for 15, 20 minutes. And I'm sure there's a lot of people, I'm not complaining, but it was extremely windy, heavy, heavy rain, and driving around some of the areas of Medina, areas that normally with rains like that, you would see some pretty extreme flooding. And I'm sure there was some areas that there was still some ponding of water and some flooding in the roadways, but in talking with Mr. Pecoli, I do and did attribute it and do attribute it to the aggressiveness this last winter and spring and continuing now of the service department and of keeping our storm sewers clear of debris. I know a lot of homeowners that have experienced flooding in the past may not recognize that, but it has helped, and like I said, there was a lot of areas that normally would have been ponding with water in the streets, which meant that it was probably, could have been going into some homes where we're working as exactly the way they're supposed to. So, Mr. Pecoli, if you pass that along to your staff, we really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Other council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilberg.
Thank you. I just want to remind residents of Ward 1 that the annual Ward 1 Community Picnic will be held at Raymiller Park on Sunday, not January, July 23rd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Free food, free music, just like it always has been in the past. One addition this year is, it's not actually a part of the picnic, but the Salvation Army will be hosting an open-air worship service immediately prior to the picnic, and that's open to the public as well, and I believe that starts at 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilberg. Other council comments? Mr. Colasar?
Mr. President, thank you. Couple here. I just want to thank the administration, specifically Police Department and Specials for their assistance in the fireworks. My wife and I actually walked up and back from the house, but we were able to witness at various intersections, the department letting traffic flow to what I felt, a lot better than what I've seen in the past, and I, you know, I just really appreciate, you know, we get a lot of people coming in this community to see the fireworks, and I appreciate the police department working well to facilitate the traffic. Also, I spoke in the beginning about sanitation meeting coming. Right now, in our community, almost all are, all our garbage, besides what people that are participating in the recycling program at the dumpsters essentially goes to landfill. We are doing the yard waste program, which is a step in the right direction, and that is recycled, I assume, eventually into mulch or something along those lines, but I'm just urging residents to, you know, reach out. My home number, 330-725-6993. Email address, mcolasar@medinahoh.org. What do you want in this community? I know everybody loves our sanitation. They do a great job. We fill the curbs with trash. It goes to a landfill. Are you guys happy with that? Would you like a curbside service? You have a chance to speak out at our committee meeting, or send myself or anybody up here in the administration emails of what you'd like. I, myself, would like to hear some feedback. I'm for curbside service, but maybe not everybody else is. There's going to be costs involved, so I'd like to reach out to residents to see if they want to get involved to help us out with that. On another note, Councilman Simpson said about the excellent drainage we have with our catch basins, but I read, I think it's today's paper, where Chippewa Lake is already experiencing algae blooms, and what I'm getting at is that, you know, our catch basins do play a large role in just the basic drainage in our community, but I urge residents that if you're out there mowing your yard or getting yard debris into the street, and some people out there do it purposely, but try to get that back up on the grass, because, I mean, those are some of the problems that we run into is these catch basins filling up with just yard debris, where we have to pay tax, use taxpayer money to go out and clean those out, and I just urge everybody to try to keep the curbside areas clean. And I'm back to Chippewa Lake, you know, the City of Medina has a portion of the city that is within the Chippewa Drainage Basin, and, you know, Chippewa Lake's the largest kettle lake in Ohio, glacier, naturally glacier-made, so I'm just urging City of Medina residents and the local governments to do what we can to try to keep these waterways as clean as possible, because there's limited drainage area for that lake, and I think the extra nutrients that are getting into the water, and I don't have a college degree in it, but